Good morning. Welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Elston for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery. He's here. He must have just stepped out. Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we come before you today just to say thank you. We thank you for the opportunity of life, health, and strength. We thank you for the opportunity to serve and do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. We pray for your continual wisdom and knowledge, Lord God. We ask your continual blessings upon our mayor, upon our council, upon everyone that works to make our city the city that it is. We pray for those who live in our city. And we just thank you that your hand is upon this city and that your will will prevail. We thank you for this season as we celebrate your birth, and we ask for the continual love and joy that this season brings. So we thank you for what you've done, the things that you're doing right now, and the things that you're going to do. We pray this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Man, that's the best pledge we've ever had.
It really was. Wish they could come back every week.
I know, right?
All right, y'all, real quick, we're going to do two quick business items, then we'll get to you folks. The chair, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meetings held on December 10th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair, we entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of December 6th through the 12th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Thank you. Now, we get to see and hear what we're all here for. The Yarra Brown kindergarten class has come again this year to sing Christmas carols to the mayor and to the city council and to all the city employees. And so you are so welcome to be here. And like we did last year, maybe we'll get two lines, you know, come up here where these guys are sitting, and then another line in front of that desk. And we're just glad y'all are here. Welcome.
Thank you. On behalf, I'm Cindy Garner, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Yarra Brown. And on behalf of the teachers and the staff and our administration, we want to thank you for the job that you do every single day. And our children have been learning about everything that you do. You're doing it not for us, but you're doing it to build a better city for them. And we thank you for your dedication to making our city a better place. We thank you for allowing us to come, and we hope that you have a wonderful Christmas.
Thank you. All right, here they come.
This is more reindeer than I remember.
Yeah. Well. Ms. Garner, I was giving instructions on how to do this. I probably should have just hushed and let you do what you're going to do anyway.
You're too correct.
There's the caboose.
And at some point, I want to be able to recognize all the teachers and the staff from Yarra Brown that are here. I'm seeing the faces. Make sure we.
She's in the hospital.
Probably got to have surgery today, probably at Grand P. We were there all night.
You know, Dasher and Dancer and Dancer and Dixon, Comet and Cupid and Donner and Wispin, but do you recall the most famous same year of all? Rudolph and the reindeer had their shiny nose, and if you ever saw it, you would even say it close. All of the other reindeer used to have to call them names, and never let poor Rudolph join any reindeer games. Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say, Rudolph with your nose so bright, won't you guide my sleigh tonight? And how great you loved him, as he shouted off with glee, ghee! Rudolph and the same dear, who looked happy and sorry.
We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. The tidings we bring to you and you again, the tidings for Christmas and a happy new year. We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. Merry Christmas!
Yay! Merry Christmas! Merry Christmas!
Oh, thank y'all so much.
Can we get a picture with? Can we get a picture with y'all?
Yes, sir.
We're going to stand behind. Council, y'all stand.
Yeah.
Here we go, Jason.
Before we do the picture, I want to recognize Ms. Mosley, our assistant principal at Yarra Brown. She's here along with Ms. Hayes and Ms. Hayes. They married brothers. I was about to stumble a little bit, so thank y'all so much for what you do. All right. Pictures. Hey, guys, y'all ready for a picture? Let's look out towards all our parents out there. You ready? Let's look this way. Look out that way so we can get the picture.
All right, I'm going to say something real quick to all the reindeers. Counsel, I want to thank y'all. This is something to the moms and dads and educators. We decided at the beginning of the holiday season, we won't have every elementary school come and sing to us. So ma'am, what a turnout. And you can tell what kind of school you have by the parental turnout also. If y'all excuse me, we've all been sick, not contagious. Well, we all may be sick now, huh? So what's amazing is my kids went to Yarra Brown, and I love Yarra Brown. And some of the teachers still talk my kids, and they look younger than me, which is weird. So we want to thank the reindeers for coming. I want to tell the reindeers about two things we have going on in the city of Gadsden, and I just want to see a show of hands if you've been able to go yet. How many of y'all have ridden the train at the Knockalula Falls? Whoa.
Yeah.
Well, if you haven't, don't forget, it's going, and we got a record number of people already have turned out. This is our biggest year ever in the history of this. The next thing we remind people about is ice skating on the Coussa next to Marana Park. We have an ice rink as big as only 10 square feet less than Rockefeller Center. So if you want to ice skate also, don't forget to come down there and skate. On the weekends, we have Sina, the Grinch, and all sorts of photo opportunities. So we'd love to have y'all come and skate. And, yes, ma'am.
What was that, Jason?
She said Jason's her favorite councilman. I'm kidding. She says her favorite song. That's the only one in the whole crowd. But seriously, thank y'all. And Councilman Back does a lot for District 4 and Yarra Brown Community Center. And as a legislator, I love supporting at Yarra Brown. I always worked with Kent Back. And just last year, he came to us about paving the concrete around the entrance, and he's the one that spearheaded that project, and I helped participate in it along with the county commissioner. So I think that's been a big difference because I've been down there. And I want to thank you for giving me your reindeer ears. So, but I want to thank everybody and wish y'all all a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas!
Thank y'all for coming. Moms and dads and grandparents. Yeah, y'all did a great job. It was really good.
Mr. Mosley.
We don't have any peppermint to give or anything.
Mr. Mosley.
Old butterscotch, like your grandmother used to keep in her purse at church, with a little porcelain on it. Yeah. Yeah, give them a high five. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Don't send us an invoice. This was pro bono, wasn't it? You did a good job. Good job. Merry Christmas. Well, y'all, thank you for your indulgence with the audience. Thank y'all for, and thank you for being here. What a, what a great morning and what a great thing.
Last time so we keep this crowd in there.
That's right. Yeah, we get a big crowd. We all, we also have another guest today, and they're very special. They're very special to me, and you may not know, but they've been, they have been very special to this community for about the last four years. And this is Majors Amy and Jim Edmonds with the Salvation Army here in Gadsden. Y'all can come up if you will to the podium while I brag on you here for a second. Y'all, this is kind of a melancholy type day in a way. They're, they're retiring. The Edmonds have served the Salvation Army and the Lord for 42 years. I won't begin to try to even recount, recount the cities. I think you came here from Louisville, Kentucky? That's about all I can remember. But I know there were countless other states, but they have, they have really, they came at a hard time during the pandemic and have, they have shepherded us through. I think everybody knows I serve on that board, and we've been through, the pandemic has seen our, the demand for our services at the Salvation Army double and triple, and it's affected our budget that way, too. And they have really guided us through this time as probably only y'all could do. So I know God sent you here for a reason, and we're so blessed that y'all have called Gadsden home, and I know you want to continue to call Gadsden home. And one day, maybe you'll get to do that after, after a short retirement to Virginia. But welcome to the city of Gadsden. Welcome to City Hall. And y'all very graciously wanted to give some thanks to others, yourself, so please do.
Okay, well, thank you, President Back, and honorable members of the council, Honorable Mayor Ford, thank you so much for your leadership and guidance and for allowing the Salvation Army to be a part of this community. As you know, Kent, and members, you may know, since 1915, we have been here, the Salvation Army has. I look like I may have been, but it's been a little bit less, as he said. Going on five years, we have had an opportunity to serve in the Salvation Army for 42 years. And as he said, in a few weeks, we'll be retiring, but we wanted to say thank you to this community, to the citizens of this wonderful community, as well as the leadership here. We try and strive, our mission to provide hope and help to those in need who find themselves at our doorstep. A lot of times, the least, the lost, and the last of this community and the communities we serve in, in our shelter. And so we've had that privilege to do that here in, in reaching out. We've partnered with the city, and so we say thank you. We partnered with many because that's how we continue to go. And if I began to mention all of our board members who I want to say thank you to as well, we would be here for a minute because we've had several who are currently advisory board members, and also those who have been and have set a legacy in helping the Salvation Army to remain here and a vital part of this community since 1915. But we, we are happy to do that. We have served, Kent was mentioning, from the Panhandle of Oklahoma to Baltimore, Maryland in the east, and several places in between in the 42 years we've been doing this. But we have not found a community as fine as this community. And truly, we say that, what a great culture. It comes from the legacy from you folks, from the families that are here, the people here. And so I want to say thank you for allowing us to be a part of it. We are retiring. We have a daughter and granddaughter, just one child, one grandchild. And so for a few years, while she finishes up, our grandchild finishes up in high school and gets on with her life, then we'll, we'll be away. But we plan to come back and make this area our home as well. Again, we just love it. We, in fact, I was telling Kent, we didn't even get a retirement home until about a month ago because we were trying, holding out to talk them into coming here. But because of school and other things, and those who have children, we just seen a lot who treated us this morning, but they want to stay in, with the continuity of the school that she's in. But I just wanted to say thank you from our hearts. It's been a great privilege serving, serving the Salvation Army, but serving in Gadsden and this community. What a wonderful community you have. So I want to thank you. Thank you, Mayor, again. Thank you, President, and all the members and the citizens of this community from me. And then Major Amy, she can share.
I don't have too much to add. I do, this is Christmas time. At the Salvation Army, it's always busy. It's always busy at the Salvation Army, but especially at Christmas. And we have going on right now our Angel Tree program. And Friday, we are having like a little ribbon cutting and things to show the community what actually goes on. Actually, I had my elves working there today, and they're trying to figure out who, which of the angels did not get adopted. And there is a few. So if there's anybody out there that would like to come and shop for a few of the angels that did not get adopted, please come and do. But, but to say in that, I am always amazed what the community does, and we've been here on, this is our fifth Christmas, what this community has done to help support that Angel Tree program. We put those little names up on the tree here and there and everywhere, and people adopt them and shop for them, and they go above and beyond. And, and it, it always brings me to tears. It really does, every year, 42 years. And I look at the bags that we bag up for each child, and you'll get to see that on Friday if you come. But it amazes me what heartfelt love these people have for doing this program that the Salvation Army has called the Angel Tree. And I thank you, I thank the community for that.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Ford.
So to y'all, I want to tell you how much we appreciate you, not only from what you do, but from a citizen's standpoint in government. We, I don't think Gadsden could, Gadsden would, cannot do it without you. Y'all fill a void that government can't fill, and, and we just want to tell you both of y'all, we appreciate you. And to you, the best of luck in your next step in life. But listen, we love the Salvation Army. I have a few questions. Yesterday, the mayor's office went and rang a bell, Tina and Ruth, and I want you to know, they said they had a record pot full of money. I'd like to challenge them that. But we're still ringing the bell, and we want to thank you for that opportunity, just to allow it. The blessing is ours, it isn't to the people that get it. And I'll say that, the blessing to see people giving and being able to do that. And I will tell you, I just came from a conference in New York, went back down. They had these bell ringers out there with music, and I was like, how do they get these? Well, nothing against their bell ringers, because I know it's a different town in a different place. They had to pay their bell ringers a percentage of what they bring in, where ours is volunteer. So there's a lot to be said for that, for your leadership and recruiting those people. And I'd like to ask, how many angels have not been adopted?
I'm, I'm not sure. There was, I know there was a one big whole family that had like a lot of kids, maybe eight kids or something, and that whole family did not get adopted. That's the only one I know.
Yeah, well, bring us that family, and we'll take care of it in our office, and we'll get the council.
Oh, great.
And we'll all do that together. And if you'll get it to Tina King, and just run it by the second floor to my office, and we'll take care of that.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm not good at shopping because I haven't shot for a zero to a two-year-old like we did last week. I had no idea. I just said, keep, keep getting diapers. Just keep getting diapers.
Lilo and Stitch, man. Lilo and Stitch, that's right. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming today.
Thank you.
See you Friday.
Yes, sir.
8:30, right? 8:30 AM?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right, y'all, what a, what a, what a good morning. Children and the Salvation Army, I don't know if it gets any better. So thank you. All right, we will move on in our agenda to item number eight. It's unfinished business. We have none today. Item nine is a resolution awarding bid number 3589 for a 2025 Ford Explorer XLT rear-wheel drive for the building department. The fleet manager has recommended awarding the bid to Ronnie Watkins Ford, and the amount is $37,822. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, item 10 is new business. I believe we have some today. Councilman, if you want to start.
Question to the clerk first. Can I do these all in one?
If you identify them all, I feel like you can combine them. Yes, sir.
All right. So we're going to do legal document 2024-1006, legal document 2024-1007, legal document All are requested by the engineering department. All document resolutions reads as follows. Authorizing amendment to agreement with CDG Incorporated, West Megan Boulevard, North 11th Street, Tuscaloosa Avenue, AgroCola Area Drainage Improvement. 1006 document is budgeted for $289,455. 1007 document is budgeted for $41,869. 1009 document is budgeted for $209,349. All coming from, these are all different accounts, right? So nevertheless, they are all for the Tuscaloosa Avenue, North 11th, AgroCola Drainage, Megan Boulevard Drainage Improvement Projects. So I'll ask today for immediate consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider all three resolutions today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
All right. Consider passage.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three resolutions.
If I could just add this little context to it, is this is the phase one of the West Megan Boulevard, North 11th Street, Tuscaloosa Avenue, AgroCola Drainage Improvement Project with, consists of engineering and inspection service required for the construction. And all of those, all of those adopt that language in the resolution.
Thank you for that. All right, Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Mr. President. I have two documents here. The first one is requested by the police department. This is an annual funding of our JAG grant. This is for the amending the fiscal year 2025 budget to receive the funds. The total amount is $25,457. This will be used to buy a explosive ordinance device toolkit, a 12-gauge pan disruptor, x-ray mounting bracket unit for the bomb squad robot, gear lockers for securing said equipment, the generator to run it, various small handheld tools, connectors and wiring for disposal of hazardous materials, and shipping charges for the above purchases. Again, the total amount is $25,457 in the form of a Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, Assistance Grant. And to be clear, the Gadsden Police Department will receive this funding and, and will continue to provide bomb disposal services for the entire Edward County area for the Sheriff's Department. So if there's no objections, I would like to consider this as a piece of new business today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, my, my next one, Mr. President, is a exciting project for the city of Gadsden. This is the first step towards the realization of Coussa Harbor, which is something you guys may have heard Mayor Ford speak about in his State of the City address. This is from the same developer who developed the city harbor project in Gunnersville that had received a lot of attention in the economic development world over the last four or five years. Mr. Lawler will be making a substantial personal investment into our city, the likes of which I honestly, on a, on a, on a private level, I, I don't think we've seen in, in decades probably to this level for a single individual to come in and invest what could be upwards of $20 million to develop our riverfront. So this will be the first step in that process. This is a resolution authorizing the project development agreement between the city of Gadsden and Coussa Harbor LLC. I'm going to read the legal comment, and this may get in the weeds a little bit, but I'll try to explain it in layman's terms afterwards. But the legal comment, funding for the $1.5 million for site preparation in section 5 6 of the agreement is not currently budgeted in fiscal year 2025 budget. Depending on the timeline of the project, some of the funds may need to come from the fiscal year 2025 funds. At that time, the council would need to approve an amendment to the budget to cover the cost. All or a portion of these funds may or not have to come from unassigned fund balance. If funding for the site preparation is not needed until after September 30th, 2025, which is when our fiscal year ends here at the city, then the money would simply be budgeted in next year's budget. So it may not be necessary for us to move the funding out of the undesignated fund balance, but it'll depend on when the project actually gets started. There's a second component to this, which involves the real estate transaction. And so depending on when all that due diligence is done, and when the real estate's done, the developer will have a certain amount of time, once that deal's done, to begin construction on the project. They'll have 18 months, and they'll have to have the entire project done in four years, I believe, 48 months is what the agreement says. And to clarify what we're doing here, we have agreed in exchange for Mr. Lawler's substantial private investment, we have agreed to provide up to $1.5 million in in-kind services for the site development. That may be projects involving our own city employees coming out and helping do site preparation work, or it may involve us actually paying for things like the paving of a parking lot, or paving of the road, or curb and gutter system, or drainage on the, on the, on the property on the site. So that, that $1.5 million would be not upfront money. The city's not going to write this guide check for $1.5 million. It would be in the form of, of goods and services as long as the project is moving forward. Second of all, it will also include a sales tax rebate to the developer of $1.5 million over the course of five years. Second of all, it will also include a sales tax rebate to the developer of one-point-five million dollars over the course of five years. For those of you who aren't familiar, these are projects that we, or agreements that we've made in the past to facilitate high-dollar value economic development projects in this community that might otherwise not happen or not be financially viable, projects if the city was not willing to step in and support those projects in some way financially. Now, having said that, there is no scenario where this isn't a financial windfall for the city of Gadsden. Not only will it generate a substantial amount of sales tax revenue every year from all the new businesses and the condos, and the boat slips that'll be rented there, and all those things, all of that will generate tax revenue for the city that will help recoup that, that abatement agreement that we have with the developer to get that money back. But again, this is net new money. This is money that the city is currently not generating in sales tax revenue. So it's not that we're taking money out of the general fund to give to this project instead of paving a road or anything like that. This money doesn't exist right now. What we're saying is, to this developer, if you go out and do what you say you're going to do, if you go and invest twenty million dollars in our riverfront, and you open all these businesses, and you build all these condos, and you do everything you say you're going to do, when you generate the sales tax off of those businesses, and you have to pay that into the city, and the state, and the county, just like any other business in Gadsden has to do, if you do all of those things, and the city gets that new money, we'll give you a little bit of it back in the form of a rebate. So no city sales tax dollars or revenue dollars are going to be used upfront to make this project happen. Before we ever give a rebate, these developers have to spend all of the money, do exactly what they're going to say, generate the sales tax revenue, pay that sales tax revenue in, and then we'll give them a portion back in the form of a rebate. I just want to, I always, I never miss an opportunity to beat that dead horse, I know a lot of people have heard me talk about this before, but it's probably the biggest misconception in this community, is that when we make these sales tax incentive deals, that we're giving them taxpayer dollars. We are not. We are rebating money if and only if they go out and do everything they say they're going to do, and generate new tax dollars. So again, the estimate of this project is that it could generate upwards of almost a million dollars a year, and net new tax revenue for the city of Gadsden once it's completed. So it's a huge day, and then again, to, to the mayor's comments earlier, and I'm sure he'll have some thoughts on it as well, but it's not just the revenue that's going to be generated at this project, at this development. It will drive economic, indirect economic impact throughout our community. The boats that fill up at our new riverfront gas pumps at Coussa Landing, shopping at the grocery stores in this community, staying in hotels for a weekend of entertainment here, all of that, bringing in new residents into these condos where they'll live, and pay occupational tax, and buy their gas, and their food, and shop in this community. All of that is what we refer to in the development world as indirect economic impact. And we have really no way of, of estimating just how large that impact will be. We just know that when you build something like this, not only does it generate revenue as a development, it also positively impacts our economy throughout this community. So that's the idea, there's a lot of moving parts to projects like this, and this is just the first step. This isn't us saying, yes, we're going to approve the project, or no, we're not. This is just one step in that process. So if everybody's sufficiently tired of hearing me talk, I would ask for immediate consideration today, please.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Madam Clerk, I'd like to request a roll call vote.
Sure. Councilwoman Latham?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Avery?
I want to make sure this is to bring it to new business.
This is whether to consider it at today's meeting, but this is for immediate consideration today.
So we're not voting on the actual resolution?
No, this is just permission-
We're voting on whether to consider it today.
Permission to vote?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Minatra?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Okay, we do have unanimous consent for immediate consideration.
Move to adopt. I'll call for a roll call vote on this as well.
Okay. Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Avery?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Latham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mayor Ford.
So I want to congratulate the council and the mayor's staff that's putting this together. More than anything, I want to, I'm excited for the constituents of City of Gadsden and surrounding areas. This is a monumental program, we've been working on for two years, and to be able to get a developer like we have, and Patrick Lawler, you know, there are some issues with his development, he understands that, just like any other developments, and he's going to fine tune with us, but this is a fabulous opportunity for the citizens of Gadsden. This op, this land has been sitting vacant for twenty-plus years. The number one thing, when we ran for office, we, we heard was riverfront development, riverfront development, riverfront development. This is just a small piece of what is to come. We told y'all we go fast, and we're going to go hard, because I think we hadn't been going fast in the past. So it's time now, like I said before, it's Gadsden's time, and this will put us on the map as far as in riverfront development and allowing us to develop other economic opportunities. This has been talked about for quite some time, it was presented at the State of City address, we've been showing plans out in the public, so we're excited about this. What this allows us to do is generate more sales tax revenue, which will be in turn put into the general fund to be spent in your council's districts, to be able to have other projects spent there also. So this is just part of us growing, it's going to provide jobs, and economic impact, usually it's a five-to-one ratio. When we get the economic impact study done in the next vote that we take, I think you'll be amazed by what it'll do. But y'all, let me tell you, this is, this is a big day for City of Gadsden, and I'm excited, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Thank you, council. All right, are there any other items for new business? All right, seeing none, we'll move to item eleven, department reports, committees, boards, we have any of those today? Nope. All right, remarks by the mayor and council, mayor, you would-
So thank you, Mr. President, I want to thank John Moore for putting the deal together that we just voted on with commercial development, he's worked tirelessly on this, and credit goes where credit's due, so John, thank you. I was informed the county commission already passed their resolution regarding the Bass Weiss Lake, I think that's fantastic. Christmas at the Falls is ongoing, we just got rated in the top one-hundred-and-fifty, at ninety-five, in the country for the Christmas light display, we're advertising that, and we love that. Christmas on the Coussa ice skating is ongoing as we speak, it's, it's been phenomenal, it's been crazy. We've ran out of skates a couple of nights, so if you want to skate, you better go. Tetrix, this is something that we're very excited about, we want to thank Councilman Avery and everyone else in that community for their community district meetings. They have just loaded eighty percent, a cyanide will be gone by the end of the year. The rest of the cyanide will be gone by January sixth, we were hoping by the end of the year, but I want to thank the EPA, I was pretty harsh on them at one time in public, I want to thank them for what they're doing, the gentlemen's down there, they will still provide security, they still have a fence up and surveillance cameras, and they will not leave until everything's completely gone. They're going to drill down in the earth and find out if there's anything in the earth also, but the key component was to get the cyanide out of there. So the cyanide will be gone by January sixth. I want to remind everyone to remain safe and vigilant during the holiday season, crazy things happen during the holiday season, and our police and fire are active, it just seems like that's the nature, so please know we're here to help you. I want to wish our employees a Merry Christmas, and thank all the citizens of Gadsden for what they allow us to do. But I want to brag on our employees in the City of Gadsden, we did partner up with Church of the Highlands with their kids, and the department heads and employees all got together, not us, with their own money, and provided Christmas to over seventy-five children. And now we'll take on the family with the angel tree with Salvation Army. The Christmas balls on Broad Street, I don't know if y'all noticed that, but we bought those out of the mayor's budget, and for everyone to enjoy, and the, their ornaments, they are, you ought to see the pictures on Facebook of everybody posting with those ornaments, it's amazing, and people love it, but it just brings a lot of joy to the people of Gadsden. I want to say tonight, there's a civil service board, they, the civil service board will be hiring our new fire chief. So you will receive an email tonight, after the meeting, who they chose, just, I told them I want to know who they choose to keep the council abreast, and we look forward to that new chapter in life, of course, with Mr. Will Reed, but he's been working with us since nine o'clock on the ward, so Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President Beck. I just want to say congratulations to the mayor, to Mr. Moore, to the council on this project. What we have seen is, we're seeing something happen that is historic, historic, I guess you could say, and I'm excited about it. I know there are naysayers, but again, things are happening in Gadsden, and it is an exciting time in Gadsden. And so I look forward to seeing this project mature, and I just look forward to the things that are in store for our city. There's so much to do, you have to kind of decide what you're going to do. Oh. Mr. Wilson is making me wrap this up, anyway. But it's good, it's a good thing, it feels good, and I'm excited about it, you can go ice skating and take advantage of the falls, so it's a wonderful thing, it's a great feeling to be a part of what's taking place. So I just want to say to our mayor, and to those that work in the mayor's office, to our city council, to our president, let's just continue to work together for the betterment of our city, for all of our districts, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to intro by saying thank you to everyone who came out to the State of the City. You know, a lot of people came out, big crowd there, this project was introduced mainly to the city as a whole, at the State of the City, and I know a lot of people left there thinking, man, this is five or ten years down the road. So I want to give a big shout out, I share the enthusiasm of every, really everybody up here should share the same enthusiasm, that the mayor is sharing along with this, for this to be officially kicking off the initial stages of Coussa Harbor today. So we can't emphasize that enough, we really can't stress that enough. This is a great day in the city of Gadsden today to officially launch the initial stages of Coussa Harbor, to all those watching who came out, to the State of the City, it's a great day, we're excited about it. So again, thank you to Mr. Moore as well, and the mayor, your staff, everybody takes a collective effort to do something like this, and the council being on board, one-hundred percent behind it. I'm super excited about all this going on, so, a lot of great things going on around the city, and I know it takes a lot of legs to be put to the vision to make that happen, so thank you. To the couple who came from Salvation Army, we're grateful to all that the Salvation Army does, providing, probably the only place I know of, providing places for people to be off the grounds at night, and having a place to lay their heads, so we're grateful. Let's remember all the less fortunate, all those who are homeless and without. Also want to just mention real quickly, my friend, Mr. Bill Avery, Western Ball this weekend, Saturday, the twenty-first, downtown, two-ten at the tracks. So get your cowboy hats and your boots out, and I'm going to be on stage with him, and I'm looking, looking forward to that.
Shaboozie.
The what now?
Shaboozie, the Western tracks.
The Western Ball. The Western Ball with Mr. Bill Avery.
Love it.
Is that Friday or Saturday?
Saturday. Saturday, I'm sorry, did I say Friday?
No, you said Saturday, but I, Tony rated him by to me to go some Friday.
Oh.
Western Ball.
Two, maybe two going on. I'm not sure. All right, but thank y'all so much, we appreciate the council, we appreciate everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith, Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mr. Beck, President Beck. Let me start out by giving condolences to the Watson family on the passing of the major art, Ms. Marionette Watson, also to the Green Pastors community with the passing of Pastor Sterling, and then Coach Baker and his family are the passing of his spouse, Ms. Baker. So want to continuously let them know that, and all those that have been experiencing this in this, this year, in the past years, during the holidays, where we have these unexpected tragedies to come, and so that continued to memorialize in our minds of our loved ones, that you are in our thoughts and prayers. Also want to give a big shout out to Cardinal Williams, who is in the finalists of possibly being JSU coach, so just hope everything turns out well with him on, on that, whoever the, the finalist will be, as JSU continues to grow and thrive. Let me say this, so I, I am not going to be the combative counselor, but I am going to be the counselor that, that I've been, and that's one that I stand on the standards as it represents my district. Today, I operated in the opposite of what I think I stated I was going to do, as it relates to the Coussa Harbor, not because the, the Coussa Harbor is not a great idea, anything of that nature, but because of the simple fact that while we grow, simply grow, and, and, and the city thrive, is that I also want, speaking as District Three Counsel, I want my community to thrive along with the city. To not allow our disadvantaged communities to be taken advantage of, also to allow funding and, and, and things to, whether it's carve-outs, or even as a TIF, to be considered, to bring up the value of those disadvantaged communities, as well as the downtown, and our riverfront, and those that are close connected to that, that growing area. And so I say this with hope, because I did hear from the mayor comments that those revenues will go into the general fund, and, and so hopefully that there's not a language there that is being missed, where they talk about the cooperative, if I'm not mistaken, where those revenue from that project will go only where that project is located. And so also that the council be vigilant and look and read through those documents, and make sure that we are making a sound judgment decision as it relates to city property and the city projects. I am not, again, opposed, but I want to be careful, again, that as we grow our downtown area and those areas of our city, that we also make sure that our communities are also included. That's just my position. And so I did opposite of what I was going to do today, so I'm hoping with, with high hopes, that one, we will be able to meet, and we will be able to talk this through. I thank Mr. Moore for meeting me today, through our conversation, I think we had a fruitful conversation, I think it was well-received, I, I believe it was. Other options was thrown out, and I, I'm having trust in those options, that we will, that we will address the needs of our communities. Again, speaking for District Three, my community, through that option, those options was given out. As we closely get to the point of surely approving the Coussa Harbor, and, and seeing the, the fruit of its labor eventually in our city, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to say Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, all the different religious organizations in this community that are celebrating during this holiday season. I hope everybody has a wonderful time and remembers the, the reason for the season. I'm sure Council President Beck, who has been involved with the Salvation Army for decades, will have more to add on this, but we did hear from the Salvation Army today, and there are a few children in our community who are part of the Angel Tree Program at Salvation Army who have not been adopted. For more information about that, you can reach out to the Salvation Army, it's pretty simple, you go by, you pull an ornament off the tree that's got an individual's name on it, gives you some information about that child, you can go shop for that child for Christmas presents, and deliver it back to the Salvation Army, and they'll be presented to the child. So it's a wonderful organization, and despite the massive philanthropic heart we have in this community, there's still a great need, and there's a few children left that haven't been adopted yet off of that tree, so please consider that, if you're able to. And the other thing I'll say is, we talk a lot about how great Christmas at the Falls is, and it is, they, they all do a great job. But one thing we don't talk enough about at Christmas on the Coussa is Frosty's Bar, okay? Frosty's Bar, Janet Terrence and that Parks and Rec crew has done an absolutely fabulous job creating a warm and hospitable environment down there. So even if you're not up for the ice skating challenge, there are food trucks there, there, there's a, there's a full recreational area there, there's a stage, there's live music that gets, performances on the weekends often. You can go to the, the Frosty's area there and get a cocktail, a warm cocktail with apple cider, from a very, very friendly staff, there's heaters, space heaters, fire pits, you can have your picture taken with Santa, there's all kinds of things, even if you're not there, to ice skate. And let me tell you, it's pretty fun to go sit over there at Frosty's and watch people fall on that ice skating rink all night. Also, something that many of you might not know, there are-
Also, something that many of you might not know, there are, from time to time, celebrity bartenders and soon-to-be special guest Zamboni operators. Just like you see in the NHL, there'll be special guest Zamboni operators, and I may or may not be one of those at some point between now and Christmas. Councilman Robinson and I are being trained formally on the operation of the Zamboni machine, so please come on out and rest assured that you will have the best, most well-manicured ice surface to skate on that you've ever seen after tomorrow. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. ... Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilwoman Minatra, follow that one.
Always. Tomorrow night from 6 to 8, Back Forty Beer is hosting a fundraiser for our Humane Society, and it is a bingo game, and we want you to come and bring cash. Merry Christmas.
All right.
For the record, the owners of Back Forty Beer will not be keeping any of that cash, just to make it clear.
Councilman Robinson, tell us about, is there anything going on at Nocle Falls?
No, it's really quiet up there this time of year. Not much going on, it's really, it's kinda crazy. But no, I do wanna add, from what the mayor said, the recognition they got, being in the top 150 places to go look at Christmas lights and be in the Christmas spirit, I think it was 95, like you said, I think there was only three in the state of Alabama, so I mean, that was really good. The other two cities are like Mobile and Montgomery or something, something, you know, we're just a smaller city, and here we are getting this recognition. So great job for all those staff up there, and it's consistently getting bigger every year and more lights, and I hear nothing but compliments when people go there, they just enjoy it. I think the only complaint you get about Christmas at the Falls is it's sometimes just too crowded on the weekends, and I try to tell all our locals, like, go during the week, you can pretty much have it to yourself and walk around and really enjoy it and take in the scenery, but leave that weekend crew for all those folks coming in and spending their tax dollars in our city. Secondly, Couso, Christmas on the Couso, I was down there Friday night, or Saturday night, I think I was down there. Just looking around, all the people, I mean, it was just packed out, everybody's having a good time, everybody's being in the Christmas spirit. I was talking to one of the employees, and I said, you know, just two short years ago, you ride by here, and this was just a gravel parking lot, there was nothing going on here. Now look at this, you got this big tree, you got this ice skating rink, you got all this stuff going on, and all these people are just back in the spirit. And it doesn't take away from Christmas at the Falls because Christmas at the Falls was sold out that night, so it's not even like this is taken away. This is something totally added to our Christmas spirit in Gadsden, Alabama. It's just good quality of life, everybody's having a good time, and it's good to see. I enjoy it.
Good point.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, everybody. I think this is our last council meeting of the year, so Merry Christmas to everybody, everybody be safe.
Mr. President, can I get an alibi real quick?
Yes, sir.
So what Councilman Robinson's saying, the tree, I forgot about the tree.
Yeah.
Y'all, that tree is what y'all helped us pass in K-More DGI, and we put that in the budget. People love that Christmas tree, and it's making a great photo. People have been making their Christmas family photos at the tree and the sled with the red ornaments on each side, and I mean, it's just, it's a beautiful scene. But we also lit the tree out in front of City Hall because we had a lot of people saying they still love that tree. So we made a point where our department, building department, got that tree updated, and it's lit also. We didn't have an official lighting ceremony because it was down at the other one, but that tree is lit so people can get their photos there also. I just wanna throw that in there.
Thanks for mentioning that.
Once we add our Ferris wheel next year?
Look at that carousel.
A carousel, a Ferris wheel.
Oh, that'll be fun. That'll be good.
Well, thank you all, and thank you for your comments. I do wanna echo so many things that have been said, the city employees and just the city of Gadsden in general, just as Councilwoman Latham said, it's just, it's an exciting time. We've talked about reimagining Gadsden, and that's taking place before our very eyes. We are reimagining our city in a very positive way. I appreciate the leadership of the administration. John Moore, thank you for your hard work. I know you've worked hard on Patrick Lawler's deal, and so kudos to you, that it's all paying off. Also wanna bring up, I was reading in, get my phone here, oh, I just lost it. My good friend Ben Reed brought up something. We were all bragging on Christmas at the Falls, and y'all, everything has a beginning, right? And so I don't know how many years ago, Councilman Robinson may remember, or Iva, you may remember, but Bud Goss and Quint Pavy and their families started Christmas at the Falls. It was called something else, right? Like Christmas?
Christmas on the Rocks.
Yeah, Christmas on the Rocks, I think, but it was a very, you know, just two families got together, wanted to do, they lived up there by the Falls, and they wanted to do something fun and something good for the community, and they started Christmas on the Rocks. And I'm, I don't remember it at that time, but I'm sure it was very small, just two families, but then it grew and it grew and it grew, and eventually the city took it over. But had they not had that vision many years ago, and I think, Iva, you probably knew them from those days, I think. And so just thank you to the Bud Goss and Quint Pavy families for starting Christmas at the Falls.
The Falls were babies.
Yeah, I used to work, I forget where she worked at. Didn't she work at the Chamber or something?
The Language.
Yeah, the Chamber, so...
Our daughter, Megan.
Just wanted to give them credit where credit's due, because they're the ones that started it. On kind of a somber note, you probably saw on the news recently, Chet Williams, Auburn's Fellowship of Christian Athletes director and the team chaplain, died last, I think, Sunday afternoon late on Lake Logan Martin in an accident when he was stepping out of his boat to get on a dock, and he slipped and fell and drowned. And I don't know, you know, only God knows the lives he impacted for the kingdom, for eternity. A lot of local guys here, I know Brant Haney had a picture. Chet Williams officiated Brant and Katie Ellis Haney's wedding at First Baptist Church, where I go to church. And I got to meet Chet at that wedding, and what a great guy. Played football at Auburn, had one of these stories where he got asked to leave the team because he wasn't behaving properly. He went into Scott Collins, who played football at Southside High School, and asked Scott to read the Bible to him and accepted Christ that night in Scott Collins' dorm room at Auburn University, turned his life around, he got back on the football team, and the rest is, you know, just a great story. And of course, he's now gone to be with the Lord, but keep the Williams family in your thoughts and prayers, and then just the countless men and women that he's ministered to that are gonna really miss him. He was so, he was the rock for so many young people that they would go to for any kind of advice or any kind of encouragement, and, you know, he's their spiritual advisor in so many ways. But, so we're gonna miss Coach Chet at Auburn University, so just keep him in your prayers. I wanna thank Your Brown Kindergarten for coming today. That's very nice, they did such a good job. And also wanna thank Majors Edmonds, Amy and Jim Edmonds. Y'all, I've gotten to know them, but what a servant's heart that family has. Forty-two years, moving around the country, directing Salvation Army. They came from Louisville, that's a pretty big city, and then they came to Gadsden, you know, to run GAD, but they did Louisville, Baltimore, large city in Oklahoma, so they were, I know Major Edmonds, in the last few natural disasters, he was called by the National Salvation Army to go head up certain components of the recovery. And so he's a real go-to guy for the Salvation Army on a national level. We were fortunate to have them here. I hope they get to return to Gadsden when their granddaughter goes off to college, so hopefully they'll be back to see us. I have a few announcements to make in regards to City Hall and the council meetings. The city will observe the Christmas holidays on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week, and there will be no work session or city council meeting here. The next work session and council meeting is being moved back to Monday, December 30th, so not on our regular Tuesday, but Monday, December 30th, and then the New Year holiday will be observed on Wednesday. Did I get that right, Iva? All right. And I think that'll be posted on our, probably our social media and our webpage, but we'll take a chance to say Merry Christmas to everybody. Think about those that are less fortunate, contact churches or Salvation Army, see if you can help in any way. We still need bell ringers. There's opportunities to do that, and a lot of opportunities to serve those that are less fortunate, and it really makes your Christmas a special time when you do that. So thanks to everybody up here, appreciate the camaraderie we have on the council, along with the administration, and of course, our clerk's office and many others. I see Brandon, our new finance director, you're not new anymore, but finance director out there, but thank you for what all you do. Nick Hall out there at Human Resource, and, you know, a lot of stuff gets done behind the scenes. I'm gonna leave people out, and I apologize, but Michael Rogers and his public affairs team doing a great job for our city. It's a fresh look, it's not off the shelf. You guys are creating it as you go, and I think it shows. I get comments all the time and compliments of how things look, Michael, so thank you